Please everyone have a seat. I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Apex Town Council. This is the planned meeting for February 5th, 2019. And if you would, first of all, I'd like to welcome everybody here. You are always welcome. Two things I want to make sure. One is there was a stapled agenda outside on the podium. They might run out. Okay, but if you've got one, great. If you can share, that would be great. The other is if you intend to speak tonight, I do ask that you go get this yellow sheet off the podium. Become familiar with the guidelines for speaking tonight. As you may know, there are two items. There's a public hearing, number one, and then there's a public forum. So the public hearing will be about one particular topic, which you can see the visuals outside in the lobby. And the public forum obviously is open-mic, so if you have something you want to talk to us about, we welcome that. As part of the invocation time, I'd like to welcome you here. As we convene the Apex Town Council meeting, I'd like to begin with observing 30 seconds of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight I ask the council and staff during this time to consider how we can be most effective in serving all of our citizens, remembering that our discussions must always be conducted in a civil fashion, respecting other people's opinions even when they are different from our own. In doing so, I also give thanks to my Creator for the blessings we all enjoy. We continue to give thanks for the many volunteers who serve our community and this area. And these unselfish individuals make this town of Apex the caring and attractive community that we all call home, with the exception of the visitors who are from neighboring towns. The individuals who give themselves deserve our thanks and our support, and we should also express our thanks to the dedicated and talented town employees, especially to our safety and public safety personnel that keep us safe throughout the day and night. Those of us who recognize that we are loved by a supreme being also may ask for the healing of the destructive partisan rift that does divide our nation. It prevents solutions to pressing problems and reflects dishonor on the potential for justice and leadership that should be an honorable legacy. We strive to rise above that here in Apex. We also can consider for the students and the nation's schools and keep in our thoughts those that have become victims of persons causing harm to innocent children, to teachers, to faculty, and none of this should be pawns of political power. We adults should remember that our next generation watches us to establish behavioral norms, and that we should all strive to set a better example for them. I ask all present to prayerfully consider how each of us can act honestly and with integrity in all that we do, which will bring honor to our ancestors who helped lay this foundation for the place we live today. In all things, help us to remember that our opinions are just that. Facts are facts, and we each need to take those into consideration and make decisions based on our facts, not necessarily our strong emotion of opinion. That can lead to poor decision-making. It is also appropriate for us to remember that the men and the women of the armed forces who are deployed in harm's way around the globe, protecting our freedoms, we know that they serve in a hostile world, and we pray for their safety. Please join me in this moment of silence now. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please do come in and have a seat. I would prefer everyone in a seat rather than standing. I understand if you're working, you need to be standing. It's my understanding that our presentation has been withdrawn from tonight's agenda. Is that true, Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, sir.
All right, so there's no presentation. We now move to consent agenda. It is also my understanding that consent agenda, 18 is no longer under consideration for tonight, and I see Diane nodding her head, and Town Manager confirmed that. So with the consent agenda, just as a preamble, these are things that are typically enacted by a single motion, typically are considered non-controversial. If a council member wishes to pull one for later discussion, they certainly may do so. I'm not aware of any other concerns, but I will ask, is there one to be pulled, or is there a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, and that's with number 18 removed?
With 18 removed.
And we have a second? Okay, any further discussion?
Did the applicant remove number 18? Or why are we removing that?
They're nodding yes.
Request the applicant. I would like to point out that consent 13, I think is a great idea. We're saving taxpayer money on buying energy from Duke Power. So I think it's a great idea to put those on public buildings.
All right, thank you. There's no other discussion on consent. I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, we now move to setting of the regular agenda. This is where we decide what we're going to discuss tonight. Our printed agenda is in front of us. My understanding, based on the remainder, is that Councilman Jensen wishes to reverse the orders of new business numbers, 1 and 2.
1 and 2, yes, please.
All right. If there's no opposition from anyone, all right, then I will ask, if there's nothing else, I'll call for the motion to set the agenda for the night.
So moved. Second.
All right. Any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda with those changes? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, we now move to public forum. Public forum is where we get to listen to your thoughts. You come to share with us. The clerk is now bringing me the sign-up sheet for public forum. I will be calling those names in the order that they are in. If you have the guideline in front of you, please make sure you've referred to it before you come up. It is a three-minute time period. And I see two names on here, so it looks like the first one is Harvey Richmond, and then followed by John Buck. So Mr. Richmond, keep an eye on the red, yellow, green lights there, and please state your name and address as you start.
Yeah. Harvey Richmond, 200 Ivy Green Chase Court in Apex. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for this opportunity to address you. I'm a retired senior environmental analyst who has spent 31 years working on national air quality standards for the U.S. EPA. Since my retirement in 2009, I've served as a volunteer leader with the local Sierra Club group called the Capital Group. As someone trained in the field of environmental science, I have closely monitored the scientific community's growing consensus that climate change is both real and significantly impacted by human actions. I urge the Apex Town Council to adopt both resolutions that Councilmember Bill Jensen plans on introducing tonight. One puts Apex on record as supporting the goals of the Paris Climate Agreement, and the other adopts clean energy goals for the town of Apex operations and encourages the private sector to adopt similar goals. The Sierra Club has a national Ready for 100 program that has worked to encourage local, county, and state governments to adopt 100% clean energy goals. Over 100 cities, large and small, have adopted those resolutions, including in the southeast, Atlanta, Charlotte, and Asheville. Several states, including California and Hawaii, have also adopted, and in North Carolina, Wake County, Orange County, Buncombe County, and a number of other towns and cities in the state. In addition to passing these resolutions, we encourage Apex to follow up with concrete steps. Cities like Charlotte and Atlanta have developed strategic sustainable energy plans that provide a roadmap to meeting the clean energy goals that have been adopted. Raleigh has just started a climate advisory panel that will provide input to the city plans to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. At the state level, Governor Cooper issued Executive Order 80 this fall, which among other things creates an interagency climate change panel. That panel is charged with developing a clean energy plan for North Carolina by the end of this summer. We encourage Apex to work with other neighboring local governments, Wake County government and schools, the state, and the private sector, as it helps lead the transition to a fossil fuel, free energy economy for our residents in Apex over the coming decades. If we are to avoid the worst impacts of climate change, the time to get started is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond. John Buck?
Good evening, Mayor, fellow council members. My name is John Buck. I'm a retired military officer and a retired 21-year teacher in Wake County Public Schools and other public schools, a special needs educator. As a special needs educator, I often taught young people who would have the kinds of problems in life that would have been addressed in that first presentation tonight. Sustainable food. In addition to sustainable food, sustainable housing is something that is unattainable for many members of our society. We have in the Triangle a wonderful group called CASA. CASA works to provide affordable housing for members of our society who otherwise are unable to achieve that. In going to a CASA meeting a couple of weeks ago, I spoke with their CEO and asked, "What can one community do?" And she said, "Well, the only community at this time in the Triangle that has its own community housing, affordable housing effort, is Chapel Hill." And I said, "How can I help in the town of Apex?" We had a meeting here in Apex on the 4th of June. It was a workforce affordability housing conversation. That meeting was attended by a number of us here in this room. I have spoken to many of you before your elections to say that affordable housing is something very significant. I hope we can consider affordable housing as part of the changes to the Unified Development Ordinance, and I have sent each of you copies of what it is that Chapel Hill uses as its model to provide affordable housing. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Buck. With that, I'll close public forum time now, and we'll now enter public hearings. Public hearing number one is the Long Range Planning, also known as the 2045 Transportation Plan and Advance Apex, which is the 2045 Land Use Map Updates. Presenting tonight is Shannon Cox, our key planner for this whole effort. Ms. Cox?
I'm happy to be here tonight with Allison Fluid, our consultant project manager, who helped to develop Advance Apex, the 2045 Plan. As you all know, Advance Apex is the process that we've been referring to the development of two plans. An update to our future land use map and a completely updated long-range transportation plan. So tonight, you're considering these two plans, and we'll be hearing comments from the public on both of these. The reason for considering these together is really to emphasize the link between transportation and land use throughout the town, and this is something that came through the public input processes is critical. Throughout the approximately 20-month process of developing these plans, we used a variety of communication methods to engage the public. We relied on the assistance of a steering committee, which helped us throughout the entire planning process. We have a website, a page on the town of Apex website devoted to Advance Apex, used flyers, social media, two utility bill mailers, signs posted throughout town, especially focusing on those areas that would not receive a utility bill, legal notices, and then a robust email list through constant contact with over 600 emails on that. Outreach occurred through three phases. So Phase 1 was focused on establishing or gathering input on the vision for Apex in 2045. We also gathered information on existing conditions, as well as input on issues that we're having now and what we might do to address them. We had a survey in Phase 1 with over 1,200 responses. We're very proud of that response rate. We also had a workshop here at Town Hall with over 60 attendees, and we gathered very rich, detailed information on six topic areas listed under the focus group meetings. The second phase of outreach was presenting draft recommendations to the public to gather their feedback and to get input on priorities primarily for our transportation recommendations. This was mainly done through an in-person workshop with over 100 attendees, but information was also available online, and we gathered input through an online comment form. During this phase, we also had an open house for our neighboring jurisdictions, as well as NCDOT, our regional planning agency, Campo, and a town council work session. So here we are in the final phase of outreach. The focus in this phase is final plan review and consideration of adoption. The two plans were posted online for a public review and comment in December. We had the planning board presentation and public hearing on January 14th, and tonight is the town council presentation and public hearing. When these were posted, we did ask for the public to email any additional comments, and we have gathered some of those, and I will go through those tonight as part of the plan So let's dive into the 2045 Land Use Update. Through that first phase of outreach, three guiding principles emerged that led to the land use recommendations that you'll be presented with. Those were to preserve the rural character in the western portion of our study area, but then also to make sure that we're creating more walkable mixed-use areas closer to the core of town. We also heard that we need to invest in our key corridors and activity nodes. Kim Lee Horn conducted a land use screening, looking at the development status of each parcel in our study area, paired with an environmental screening to see which areas are unlikely to develop, and then looking at drivers and trends. And this led to the identification of 10 focus areas. So these are the areas that are most susceptible to change between now and 2045. Most of the recommendations for changes to our land use plan are in these 10 focus areas. However, we did identify some small pockets of other areas where we also made some recommendations, and those are shown on this map. So what's standing out in color here are those areas, as well as showing areas that are preserved for conservation across the map. For each of those focus areas, two to three alternative scenarios were developed and presented to the public. We always included the Peak Plan 2030, our adopted land use map, as one option, and then one to two other alternatives. We asked the public in the second phase of outreach, "Do you prefer a specific alternative, and what do you like or not like about what you've been presented with?" That information was summarized and presented to our steering committee, and we made a final recommendation of a preferred alternative to move forward in the memo. So in the land use memo, for each focus area, you'll find a description of the location, the existing conditions, key considerations that led to the recommendations, a comparison of the 2030 land use map to the 2045 recommendations, and then which of those three guiding principles the recommendations address. In addition to the recommended changes to the land use map, there were recommended changes to our land use classification descriptions. So those are in the table up on the screen. The general theme is that we are recommending lowering the density of the rural residential classification, and then increasing the potential density in our medium, high, and high-density classifications, as well as adding duplexes and townhomes as appropriate.
Shannon, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So if you could go back to that last one. So currently in the 2030 plan, townhomes are allowed on medium-density residential, correct?
Yes.
And not on low-density residential?
Correct.
This change, low-density residential would allow townhouses, but your density would have to be three units an acre, is that?
So we do have a comment that I will be addressing in a few slides to... This was the description in the public draft.
Okay.
The planning committee of town council asked us to clarify that in low-density, where we have low-density on the future land use map, townhomes and duplexes would be allowed in a mix with single-family residential. So that is that change.
You'll speak more to that in a few slides?
That's basically what I'll say.
All right.
We didn't set a percentage, though, did we? In terms of, for the mix, I think.
No, we did not.
Most of those come as plan unit developments, so we have the ability to discuss that at that time. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the idea we discussed at the planning committee, Councilman Meyer, is there's a scenario possibly where there's high density in a small part of the development, there are a lot of open space around it, kind of like a big courtyard or something. So, not sure that's going to happen, but that was how we discussed it in the planning committee, and probably, I think, in this plan as well.
Okay, thank you. These continue the changes to the land use classification descriptions. So here it's showing that for high-density residential, we would set a minimum of 14 dwelling units per acre, and that the maximum would be determined at the time of rezoning or site plan approval. We're also revising the park description, is park public or private, clarifying the landfill description, and then we've added a new classification, recreational mixed-use activity center, which I will show you on the 2045 plan. So as I mentioned, we have received some public comments since this was posted in December. I'll walk through each of those, as well as the staff recommendation. So the first was actually identified by staff. We had an inconsistency in the parcels shown as park, public, or private on Wimberly Road. The parcels changed throughout the planning process, and we just needed to make a correction. The second is what I was mentioning with the request from the planning committee to clarify that in low-density residential, duplexes and/or townhomes would be allowed in a mix with single-family residential. We received a comment... Let me move this over here. We received a comment pertaining to 1,000 Double Helix Road. Just to orient you, this is Wimberly Road, to change the rural density to low-density residential. This actually wasn't changed as part of our original recommendations, but after reviewing this, staff agreed that low-density is appropriate in this area, given the proximity to the future park, as well as the need for a collector street in this area for connectivity. And I'll try to remember to note which changes the planning board also recommended, and so far, all of these were also recommended by the planning board. It's in your staff report if I forget. We had a request to maintain the medium-density residential here on Old US-1 Highway, instead of the office employment, which was recommended. Staff are recommending that this area be striped to allow for flexibility along this major corridor. Planning board agreed with that recommendation. The town of Cary informed us, this is our border on Farm Pond Road, this is Davis Drive, that residents on Farm Pond Road would likely prefer to maintain medium-density residential away from the Davis Drive frontage. So staff are recommending keeping medium-density residential here while making the change to office employment along the Davis Drive frontage, and planning board agreed with In Focus Area B, we received comments to maintain these two parcels, this large one and the one just to the north, as medium-density residential. Staff are not recommending that we make this change on the 2045 plan. The low-density residential is actually consistent with development that's been approved in the area. The Little Beaver Creek and its flood plain, which runs through here, create a natural transition to low-density residential, and we feel this is responsive to the public comments to have more rural character in this area. Planning board agreed with staff recommendation.
Shannon, before you advance, can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
Is that near the Friendship High School, you said?
Yes. So, sorry, I didn't orient you. This is the Friendship Schools campus. This is Hume Olive Road.
Okay. And Friendship Station is right next to the yellow on the west side, right?
Yes, it includes some of these parcels running through here.
Okay, and then on the other side of where that black arrow is to the... I guess, is this west, to the left there?
This direction would be east, and this would be west.
North is on the right side, how they meant?
North is to the top.
North is the top. Okay, so on the west side of that block, there's medium-density development down there? Currently, there's some that have been approved and that are in the works. I believe, if I remember correctly, I think Pulte did one of those.
Yes, so I'm going to answer, but please verify I'm correct. So the future land use map shows medium-density residential in this area, but the approved plans are consistent with our low-density description of three dwelling units or less per acre. Thank you.
Okay, so they're zone medium, but their actual units per acre is less than three?
So the future land use map shows medium density, but the approved projects are less than three, yes.
Except for Friendship Station, which has some townhouses?
I don't know the overall density of Friendship Station off the top of my head.
Friendship Station's mixed-use. There's all different kinds of residential, as well as office and retail.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you. Within Focus Area J, this will be familiar to you. I think just the last meeting, we had an approved change to the future land use map. This is just carrying that forward for the Trinity Pod into the 2045 plan. Within the other areas, there was a comment, this is Jenks Road, to change this area on the north side of Jenks Road to medium-density residential. This was not considered by planning board. We received this comment after that public hearing, but staff are recommending no change to the draft plan in this location because this is consistent with the guiding principles for Advance Apex to create more walkable mixed-use areas along our major corridors and activity centers. This is the overall recommended 2045 land use map. We do have the poster-sized version outside, if anyone would like to look at this. I can also pull it up if there's public comments in a more legible version. I'll just point out a few things. So overall, the 2045 map expands the low-density and rural residential area in the western part of Apex and south of Old US-1. We've also identified park, public, or private, where the town is actively working to develop parks, or where there may be a future opportunity, such as in the Knights Play area, where that's currently leased property for the golf course. Also, between Old US-1 and the railroad tracks, is identified as park, public, or private.
All the way down?
No, not all the way down, just where there's a little bit more width between the road right-of-way and the railroad right-of-way. However, our bike plan recommends bicycle facilities for the entire length. So it's consistent with that.
How much property is that, do you know?
I don't know. The land use plan identifies two areas with the new classification of the recreational mixed-use area. This is adjacent to the New Hope Valley Railway, and then this location is where Hume Olive would meet the future American Tobacco Trail extension. The idea of this new classification is to create a really unique type area in Apex. This is something that we had a lot of support for, and it supports our bike plan recommendations as well. It could be businesses supporting... plan recommendations as well. Um, it could be businesses supporting recreational uses. Um, the plan also does create, um, some additional opportunities for the higher-density, um, mixed-use areas closer to the core of town, um, including in this area, here, and near Jesse Drive and 1010. Finally, it responds to, um, public comments that we received during the workshop, um, especially south of Pleasant Park, where there was a desire for that to stay, uh, rural residential, and in the Castle Wood area, where there was a desire for that to be shown as rural residential. Okay.
Able to answer the question about acreage, if you would like?
It's very approximate.
Um, we're approximating over here. It's about thirty-eight hundred linear feet, and it's about twenty-eight acres, give or take.
Thank you.
That's between the railroad tracks and Old One?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, moving to our transportation plan. I'm not gonna go into detail on the first three chapters, but these really establish the foundation for the overall plan. They describe the process that we used, the basis of the recommendations, as well as, um, document the guiding planning themes. The fourth chapter is new to our transportation plan. We don't have a similar, um, chapter or map in our adopted plan, and this is one of the ways that we are connecting the land use recommendations with the transportation recommendations. In chapter four, we have a map now showing, uh, context areas. So what you see in, um, green is our rural context. The light brown is suburban. Blue is transit-oriented, and the peach is town center. For each of these context areas, chapter four describes the typ- typical development patterns, um, prioritizes modes based on what people are most likely to use in that area, as, as well as recreational uses, and, um, gives some street design considerations, such as whether, uh, shoulders and swales might be more appropriate or curb and gutter, and street spacing. Chapter four also includes our updated roadway cross-sections, and provides, um, a description of how we will use this information when we have a new project or, um, a development to guide the, the transportation network and street design. The next three chapters, uh, focus on each of the modes, so roadways, bike, pet, equestrian, and transit. These are all structured the same way. We provide an introduction, describe the process that was used to make recommendations, describe the proj- project recommendations, and policy recommendations. So to highlight a few things on our recommended roadway network map, um, so the, the intent of this map is to show, um, conceptual alignments for where we would need future roads for connectivity, as well as where we may need roadway widening or intersection improvements due to capacity or safety issues. So some of the things that you'll find are a new designation for fifty-five business, and then following fifty-five bypass to a six-lane super street. We're also showing proposed interchanges at Technology and the future Jesse Drive intersection. You'll see that we've primarily added new collector streets intended for connectivity in the western part of Apex, as well as, um, south of Old US One. We've, um, upgraded classifications, um, on some roads, uh, such as New Hill, uh, Olive Chapel, uh, between Olive Chapel Road and sixty-four, where it's anticipated to be needed for capacity. And we've identified locations of potential future roundabouts throughout town. In addition, this, uh, map shows the location of potential future, uh, road, railroad grade separations, and that's something that we are continuing to study as part of the, um, southwest area study. We'll actually be getting concepts to see how these would work, could work, and we'll use that to do an update, uh, to this, to this map, to actually show some concepts. Um, this plan also recommends a future, um, grade separation of US One, little trouble seen from this far away, um, from, between Lufkin and Shiflin. The bicycle, pedestrian, and equestrian, uh, map brings in all of the recommendations from the bike Apex plan that was just adopted in January. Um, so I won't go into as much detail. Um, but in addition, it also shows sidewalks on both sides of all of our collector streets and thoroughfares. Um, while we're not showing them on all residential streets, it is noted that we would have them on at least one side of residential streets. Um, in addition, this chapter recommends a policy where we prioritize standalone bicycle and pedestrian projects in our town center and transit-oriented context areas. So again, we are trying to connect the land use recommendations with how we prioritize projects and, um, and modes.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Equestrian, it's like horseback?
Yes.
What's our vision on, I, I, I don't see a whole lot of horses around town anymore, so, just curious.
There's, there's not, and, and there, um, there aren't a lot of recommendations in this, uh, plan for equestrians, but there is an interest still in the western part of Apex and heavy use on the American Tobacco Trail, uh, by horses. Um, and, uh, I believe it's Reagan Road still includes a, a soft path, so that horses can get to the Tobacco Trail. So, I wouldn't say it was a, a huge component of our recommendations, but in the western part, it still is an interest.
You felt like, or staff felt like, it was still a big enough impact to leave the equestrian on there?
Yes.
I, I would think that'd be used as a multi-use pathway anyhow, not just horses, but people, walking, riding their bikes, just like the Tobacco Trail.
With, with the Tobacco Trail, I noticed that you ha- you have extending all the way to Hume Olive, and then it's changing over. Is, I'm guessing, there's no, um, view that through 2045, that train that, that runs right now is gonna close, and we could use that as the rail-to-trail all the way down that way?
So, um, the, the Wake County Greenway Master Plan, which we are consistent with, actually recommends, um, a rails, a rail-to-trails connection that's a little bit different, where people could actually put their bike on the train and connect from the train to the American Tobacco Trail. So, really connecting those recreational, um, activity centers with something that's a little unique and interesting.
And would it pick up after that?
Right.
At that station?
So you could get straight from the train to the trail.
Okay.
Okay, the last, um, modal map is the, uh, transit recommendations. So this chapter integrates what's in the, um, Wake Vision Plan, so the ten-year Wake Transit Plan, as well as what's in the, uh, 2045 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Um, a substantial change from our adopted plan is, instead of showing light rail, uh, we are showing commuter rail that would eventually go into the Veridia area, that's consistent with regional plans. Um, we've carried forward the regional bus routes, but then we've added a network of future bus circulator routes. So that's what you're seeing in this blue and white. These would be intended to serve the town, but connect to our regional transit system as well. Um, the route that is shown in green here was identified as the priority circulator. It uses, um, primarily NC fifty-five, goes into Beaver Creek, as well as using part of the Peakway, Tingen, and James Street.
Um, with this one, I was staring at this a lot for a while, um, last night. The two stops in downtown Apex are awfully close together, and one serves both rail and bus, I believe, and one is just one. Um, is there not a, idea maybe to consolidate those in a future plan?
So, um, we did have discussion about those, and, um, wanted to leave them on consistent with our adopted plan at this point. Um, however, where those, those transfer stations and those multimodal centers are, we'll be working closely with our regional agencies, and already have started talking with them about, um, the best location for a transit center for the regional routes to come to and from. So, we wanted to leave them on for now, um, as, as conceptual areas, but that could change in the future as we learn more about how the transit network will work. The final chapter focuses on plan implementation. It addresses funding opportunities, provides an action plan, um, and not part of the adopted plan, but something that staff now have as part of this process is a prioritization tool for our roadways that addresses these, um, issues, safety, congestion, connectivity, freight, and what our local priorities are. Um, so, this is a tool that we can use to inform our requests for the capital improvement plan, as well as identify projects, um, appropriate or that may compete for state and federal funding. Like the land use plan, we did have some comments on the, uh, public draft of the transportation plan. The first was to revise the alignment of future Richardson Road between Old US One and US One to avoid existing homes. Um, so, this is Old US One, this is US One. Our adopted plan is this green and yellow line, and you can see that it, it does, it would impact an existing home. Um, the citizens' request was to shift the alignment east of all the homes in this area. That's not possible to meet thoroughfare standards and, and make that shift. We just can't turn the road that fast. Um, but we did, um, identify conceptual alignment that would avoid direct impacts. Um, we did discuss with the, the person who requested this, that, um, land use would also likely change in this area if the road were to be built, but we wanted to see what we could do to minimize impacts with our plan. Um, so staff are recommending the, um, the white bold line there.
Do you have any idea when that might take place?
There's no funded project to build this roadway. Far. It's not in the ten-year plan.
I hate far.
(laughing).
Cause that, that actually ties into, uh, industrial center on the other side that Holly Springs is doing, and I think, uh, if we could coordinate that at some point.
Yeah, so, I mean, and that's, if, if there are potential projects that, um, would move this forward as far as development, then that is more likely than anything that the state or federal funds would build at this point.
I'd love to see the overpasses, even if it's a overpass to nowhere on our side, to get things started.
Um, this, uh, was actually, uh, passed at the last town council meeting. It's the removal of the minor collector street associated with Trin- the Trinity Pud up to Jesse Drive. We want to carry that forward to the 2045 plan. We received a request, a citizen request to take another look at the, um, collector streets in the Bosco area. Um, in particular, we spoke with the property owner of this parcel who was concerned about the two collectors, um, that would, could impact his property. He informed us that there's a, a farm access road that borders the top of the property. So we, um, are recommending an adjustment here, as well as, um, suggesting that the Mason Road extension be shown as a connector instead of a collector street.
And that curve's not too sharp?
That meets our standards for a minor collector street. At a conceptual alignment.
Just can't speed.
(laughing) Sometimes there's benefits to slowing people down. Um, staff identified two corrections that were needed. Uh, the first was to appendix D, which, uh, identifies which of our thoroughfares are major or minor. We needed to make some changes to be consistent with the adopted plan. And then on further review, we also want to recommend that Apex Peakway be designated as a major thoroughfare instead of some of our roadways which, within the Apex Peakway. That's with the exception of South Salem Street from NC fifty-five to the south, which we would want to take another look at once the Peakway's complete. And then finally, um, between the public workshop and the draft, um, mapping error occurred that removed, um, the extension of Colby Chase east from Smith Road, we need to add that back to the final plan. Um, so that, that is the overview of both plans, um, but one thing that we want to address is how the transportation plan impacts development plans that are in our review cycle. Um, and so staff are requesting that the town council make the motion listed at the bottom of the screen. You have a handout, um, this is an addendum to the staff report that explains, yes, thank you, explains, um, the cross-sections that are recommended to change that would impact plans in our cycle. So, to me, the, the most critical is the four-lane thoroughfare. Our new cross-section goes from one hundred feet to one hundred and ten feet, and this is to be consistent with the NC DOT standards. Uh, most of our four-lane thoroughfares are NC DOT roads, and so we want to make sure that we're working within what they would typically require. Um, we're also, uh, the three-lane thoroughfare is changing from seventy feet to eighty feet. That's primarily to give us an overall better cross-section with some more space between the edge of the road and, and the pedestrian facilities. And then the two-lane rural thoroughfare, thoroughfare is recommended to change from ninety feet to one hundred and ten feet. Um, this one, if you'll notice, the one hundred and ten matches our four-lane. Um, we have received input from Campo, as well as Town of Cary, and what they've experienced, that in the future, we, we may want to expect, um, a, a desire to change our rural thoroughfares to four-lane median divided. So we want to make sure that we're planning now for that possibility, and that we have the right-of-way to do it without impacting, um, people's homes and businesses. So typically with development, um, they will be required to dedicate one-half of right-of-way from the center line of the street along their property frontage. The handout, um, shows which plans are in our review cycle, um, that could be impacted. There's really two that we feel we, um, may have some challenges with, and those are the two in white at the top, um, because of where they're at in their, their cycle and the plans that they're, they're moving forward.
Well, can you review what you, what you want us to do?
Oh, sure. Um, so the, the recommended motion from staff is, um, that any application for development that does not have site or subdivision plan approval at the time of adoption of Advanced Apex must meet the requirements of Advanced Apex unless otherwise specified in approved zoning conditions. And there are some shown in the table that have zoning conditions that, that have specific requirements.
So you're saying these two yeses for the issues, if we use that kind of language, they may still not be required to?
So the two-
In the rightaways?
The two yeses are the, the projects where we think it may, um, be a challenge for them to comply with our updated cross-sections. However, we still are recommending, um, the motion as proposed. Um, so Eagles Twelve, um, the last, the middle we received was in February of two thousand eighteen, so it was before we had these recommendations, and they're- we had these recommendations, and they're proposing a lot for their site, so it might be a little tight to meet this new standard. And then, Friendship Station, section four through six. Well, we just got the site plan in this cycle. They've had their PUD plan and their concepts for quite a while, so this may create an issue for them to adjust with the additional right-of-way. The rest, we have either already told us that they're willing to comply with the new request, or we've worked with them on a buffer reduction, or they have zoning conditions that would exempt them from providing the right-of-way if this motion is made.
And are we legally vulnerable if we make, use that language for those two that are possibly problematic?
This is the first I've seen of this, I'm comfortable giving you legal advice in this question.
Okay.
Maybe, let me jump in here. I think this is, it's great that we have 10 that seem to have no issue either through mitigation or ongoing work and awareness that this plan for 20 months has been in the works, and we have the two items. It would be my expectation if council approves this, and I think maybe it's a good idea to do so, that if these two do have an issue, that our staff would be willing to try to work with them when they do come up with a site or a subdivision plan, and if there's an exception to it, that when it does come up for discussion, that maybe there's an opportunity for us to look at that, you know, to help, right? If mitigation is necessary, I think there may be some understanding, you know, that we can try to do, you know?
And there may be opportunities like there have been with the others with the buffer reductions, so we would certainly try to work with them on those types of things.
I mean, I wouldn't want to call it lawsuit mitigation, but I would like, I think it would be good for us to try to figure out. There's only two, so I think we can manage those pretty well.
Can't they go to the Board of Adjustments, Mayor?
That depends, yeah, depends on the process point at which it happens, but if they haven't had a subdivision or a site plan yet, then they would either be found compliant or not compliant at the time. So, if they're found not compliant by technical reason, then I suppose that would be an opportunity for an adjustment, but, I mean, I'll let staff follow their process for that.
The most likely remedy will be the same as the other ones, which is to have a zoning condition that makes it so they do not have to have the 110 feet. So, if they would like to not meet a plan, if it is adopted, they can come back and ask you all for that.
Good point.
Thank you for your time and patience through all this material. Planning Board did unanimously recommend adoption of the plans, with the exception of the few comments that we didn't have at the time of their hearing, and staff are also recommending adoption. And I'd be happy to try to answer any other questions.
All right. Any questions beyond what we asked in line as we were presented? I still do have a public hearing to get to, so I just want to check, make sure before Shannon sits down.
Maybe I'll ask my question to you now about what we discussed earlier. We've gotten some feedback about, from some residents of a neighborhood about a zoning, particular zoning that may come up, but it affects the land use plan as well. And you made a map. Would you bring that up for me?
Yes.
Of the high-density parcels. And I can explain, I think, three of them, but one of them I cannot, and I was wondering if you, would, we want to react to my explanation. Right, thanks. So, these are the ones where it's changed from something to high-density, right?
Yes, so, this map, and I have to give credit to Will Brown, who made the map, shows the changes between our 2030 adopted land use plan and the 2045 recommended. So, these are showing only the changes to add high-density.
So, when I was looking at this today, I saw on the bottom right, it's near a high school, or some school. The next one up was at the intersection of 1010 and Jesse, which were both going to be improved. One near Castlewood, which is kind of a unusual situation with, and we learned from those residents, but the one near Walden Creek, to me, had a harder time explaining that change. And so, can you, I know there's some higher density in the area, but can you explain why it was striped and not just medium to high?
Sure. So, I think one thing that you'll notice consistently is that all of these areas are located on thoroughfares. So, that's one thing, is typically we want our higher-density residential uses to have easy access to thoroughfares. The Walden Creek area, I think a lot of people know where this is, but just to make sure. The Walden Creek area in particular has easy access to 540 as well as 64, a strategic highway corridor. So, it's also near other areas on our future land use map that are proposed for high-density or commercial or medium-high density. So, we're looking at easy access to roads, easy access to non-residential uses, and it's also near one of our future transit corridor recommendations. So, those are the reasons that would go into a staff recommendation for higher-density residential in this location.
Okay.
Shannon, so, my understanding on this, this particular piece is that even though it's situated well in that little area between 540 and 64, it's actually not easy access. There's a lot of back motion to try to get to these main corridors from this particular piece of property, that it, I mean, it does not dump out onto 64 nor 540.
So, it's okay, I'm going to pull up the bigger map where we can see roads more clearly. And then, this might be helpful for the commenters to speak to as well. So, this is the area that we're speaking to. This is Jenks Road and Morris Acres Road here. So, Morris Acres Road, you can access 64 headed west only, and that's probably, I don't have the comments, but I'm guessing that that was what they might be referring to. So, I do think that we have some driver confusion and some wayfinding issues of people who think they can take that road to head east on 64. That is something that we submitted a project request to NC DOT to address, to work on the deceleration lane as well as some wayfinding there. But I do think that with some modifications and corrections, access here is overall supportive of higher densities.
Is the Morris Acres intersection plan to be different with 64, plan to be different in the future land, or transportation plan?
So, for 64, we don't, we actually have a more specific study, the US-64 corridor plan, and that's guiding changes like what's being proposed at Laura Duncan and Lake Pine. So, the transportation plan doesn't show that fine of detail, and I would have to look back to see what was in that long-range plan specifically for Morris Acres.
Okay. Another process-based question, so unrelated to that now. With the focus areas, when you presented the different alternatives and the existing plan, were there some that it was, basically, the public was kind of split on what they favored, or was, were all of them pretty much, there was an easy majority for one of the alternatives, or keep it the same?
So, there were some where there were some differences of opinion, and that is one reason why it was important to have those more detailed comments. So, we did actually not just look at what people might have put their dot by as far as what I prefer, but what they wrote about what they liked or didn't like about each one. And so, what was ultimately recommended, in some cases, was a blend of the alternatives that were presented at the workshop. And we did that effort with the steering committee.
And the steering committee was all in agreement on those, like blended things? Or was there some that they kind of fought over?
I don't think we had any big arguments, or, I think we pretty much, it wasn't, again, like they didn't vote, but it, I feel like we came to consensus around what was recommended.
Okay. And I, okay, I'll keep going. The grade-separated future connections, I said this in the workshop and I want to say it out loud here, I think there needs to be some outreach to the neighborhoods that are going to be, that are existing, that are going to be in the vicinity of those grade-separated connections, because I live in one that was surprised, and it was a bad surprise. So, having this map, if we pass it now, I think will give us the document that we can show them and say, here's what's coming at some point, because the surprises, you know, it's good to avoid those.
And we do have a little bit more information since we met in the work session. So, the Southwest area study, as I mentioned, is developing concepts for those. We have draft concepts now for staff review. We'll be meeting with them this week, I think, to start to take a look at those, and we have already talked with that team about the need for outreach to address those.
And the Laura Duncan, and old Apex, whatever it's called, that one too, I think.
Yes, that would be one of them.
Okay.
Any others?
Yeah, I have a question. Can you point on the map to the rural density, the five units an acre area that we've, that we talked about? Was that at the end of Olive Chapel Road that we were talking about, five units an acre?
So, I think you're, are you referring to the low-density?
No, wasn't there a five units an acre?
It's one unit to five acres.
Oh, one unit to five acre, I'm sorry, I said that backwards. Where is that area at?
So, it would be, it would be the green, this shade of green, what you're seeing, that's classified as rural density residential on the land use map.
Okay, so, walk me through this, sorry. If, so if you stay in the county, if they don't want to join the Town of Apex, then what's the, how small does the county allow lot sizes in that area, like one?
They have R-80W, which is 80,000 square foot, which is about two acres, one unit per two acres.
Okay, one unit per two acres. So, you, okay, if you come to the Town of Apex, it's one unit per five acre in that area, plus all the improvements that the town's going to require, right? Like the curb and gutter and sewer and water and?
Correct.
Right. Okay, so, I'm just trying to think of, I know we've had a lot of discussion about affordability in housing, and I love large lots, but are we willing to, as a town, have y'all considered maybe changing some of the development standards in those areas to not be so cumbersome from a financial aspect?
So, our, as far as transportation goes, our rural cross-sections do not include curb and gutter. So, they are ribbon pavement, ditch, swale section. And we, the street spacing is less dense, I would say. You don't need as many connections, because there aren't as many people using those roads. So, in that way, I think there is maybe a slightly less expensive standard for the rural areas. As far as water and sewer, I can't speak to that, but I'm sure that...
But we do use up our standards on the curb and the gutter on the edge of the roads.
Yes.
Okay, one other area, this is going all the way back to when this thing first started, and we have the letter in front of us, back in 2015, a property owner requested to be excluded from the study. Was that area, I believe that was an area we talked about that was included in the study that they might have seen a change on?
I don't have the letter that you're referencing.
I think it was the, let's see, the, that piece by Friendship Station that I was asking about with the black arrow that you had on it?
So, can I just comment? In 2015, that would have been the 2035 economic study that was done at that time. We didn't start on this project until?
End of 2017.
Right, 2017.
So, they had asked to be excluded from what in that letter, do you recall?
The prior plan that had looked at the western area for economic development opportunities.
Which was a prerequisite to the 2045 plan?
It was just an earlier plan that was looking at opportunities for non-residential land use to be designated.
It was a part of the supplemental to the 2030, but it was targeted.
Okay.
Yeah.
It came out of, it came out of a proposal Mr. Jensen wanted to do, and so, we did all that to make sure that citizens were consistent, was consistent with what the proposal was.
Do we grant their request, or did we just kind of, I mean, what did we do? I don't remember excluding any specific pieces of property.
Well, before we go there, what's the relevance to this project? So, I know where we're going with this.
Yeah, so, I guess the relevance would be if they excluded, they asked us to stay out of some study areas or changing their classification of their land, so they were like, hey, we understand this is going on, but we would like to see our study, our land classification stay the same, so if you don't mind, keep us out of it, because there's a lot going on out there at the time, right?
So, not that I don't remember, but it's likely we honored the request, because that's typically what we would do, or at least we might look at it from a distance and, but not necessarily, you know, but not necessarily make a change.
Yeah.
But that was also in the context of the economic study that was very targeted. Here, we've got a project that we started 20 months ago, and that, at least to my knowledge, hasn't been renewed. That request hasn't been renewed within the new context.
Yeah, I hear you. I think my concern on, and I don't want to get project piece land specific on this, because I realize the scope of all the projects, but this has been at the forefront of kind of, over the last three or four years, you know, since, since we started our economic study and then the land study, the land use map change. There's a lot going on out there by the high school, and I'm fearful that this one piece, again, not to get piece-specific, but I will for a second, is going to change a lot of, again, how expensive it is to develop an Apex and everything it requires. I think that one piece changing, like we're proposing, might encumber what's going on out there, just my perspective, but.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Shannon before we go to the public hearing? All right. Thank you, Shannon. And so, at this time, I'll open the public hearing and call in order, Jason Barron is first, followed by Dan Balcom, if you want to be getting prepared, and then Andrew George, and then Jeff Roach. As always, please observe the lights. Welcome, Mr. Barron. Please state your name and address as we get started.
And just before we start the clock, I'm actually here on behalf of two different clients, talking about two different matters. Is there a way I can get some leniency on that, three minutes?
No, I'm sorry.
Just three?
Hopefully, they have similar concerns, yes, sir.
Not really. Okay, Jason Barron with Morris Acre Law Group, 421 Fayetteville Street, Suite 530, here to talk about two different proposals and then also to offer an observation. With respect to the Morris Acres parcel that you cited, I'm working with Kaplan Residential on a zoning case that was submitted at the end of last week to develop that site consistent with the proposal before you all tonight to change that from medium-high to, from what its current designation is to medium-high, high-density residential. We think that's the appropriate classification for that. That classification allows for my client to achieve a couple of things. One is preservation of significant open space areas as part of the PUD that's been submitted. They're designating essentially the northeastern corner of that site adjacent to Walden Creek as permanent open space, passive open space in that area, and the neighbors that we've met with adjacent to the site are supportive of that. The second thing that it does, and my client has authorized me to do this, we're going to be offering as part of that PUD rezoning application on affordable housing commitment. An actual percentage of the units will be developed for affordable housing. If that density is dropped down off of that, it's going to constrain my client's ability to do that as part of the zoning case, and so, we support the proposal that's before you all tonight. The second case that I want to talk about is the Jenks Wemberley case that Shannon mentioned. There was a comment about changing that small portion of Jenks and Wimberly from what it's currently classified as, which is high-density residential, commercial and office, to medium-density residential. I'm working with Taylor Morrison Homes. They developed the preserve at White Oak to the immediate north of that site. They would like to develop that parcel at the intersection for a more densely populated townhome community. They like townhomes in that area, they think it's a good transition. They think it will better serve the other areas in that vicinity that are planned for commercial. And so, we would request medium-density residential consistent with the comment that Shannon mentioned in her presentation. The last point that I want to make, I'm personally opposed to the minimums that are recommended in your plan. I applaud the town for why you would want to include those minimums. The challenge that I see from functionality of having minimums included is I think it constrains the creativity that can come out of the rezoning process. I mean, as you all are aware, the rezoning process is oftentimes a negotiation between people who are immediately impacted by a development and a client who wants to develop their property. I think it constrains the ability to craft context-appropriate creative solutions to concerns that are raised. And so, I think having a preference for some sort of minimum is a good idea, but to state that, you know, there's going to be a minimum of 14 units to the acre, or a minimum of seven units to the acre, I just don't think is in the best interest of the town or the folks who are trying to develop land in this area. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barron. Dan Balkum, and then Andrew George, and then Jeff Roach. Roach. Sorry about that.
Never said that name before.
Mr. Balkum.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity to come and speak. I have a letter here from my sister and brother-in-law, Carol Balkum-Helan and George Healan. They own some property in Western Wake County, known as the Walden Olive Property. And I think you all have letters. Do you have copies of this letter?
There is a letter on the desk, yes.
Yeah, I think you have, okay. I'll just read the letter.
As long as you can do that within the timeframe, Mr. Balkum.
I'll do my best. Okay. Dear Council members, because we're unable to attend the meeting due to our health conditions, we are requesting that this letter be read. We would like to thank all those in attendance for allowing us the opportunity and time to have our letter read and listen to our requests and concerns. Please note that the two parcels of land referenced above, this is the Walden Olive Property, have been in our family for six generations. During this time, we've continually worked with the town of Apex and surrounding communities to grant access and easements to our land, allowing for development and environmental upgrades to the surrounding areas. Please see the following easements that have been granted. The first one was easement granted to Progress Energy for overhead transmission lines. Then, second was easement granted to Apex Marshville and surrounding communities for pressurized wastewater line. The third was easement granted to the town of Apex for electrical transmission and distribution lines. And the fourth was easement granted to the town of Apex for sewer line for servicing neighborhood communities. We are requesting for your consideration to maintain the medium-density zoning for the parcels referenced above. Several of our neighboring parcels that borders ours have been zoned medium-density. This includes the Woodbury subdivision to the south and the Friendship Station to the east. The connecting road between both of these projects, Horton Ridge Road, would be running from New Hill Holloman Road through the Woodbury subdivision, through our property, and then through the Friendship Station, and eventually connecting with the Richardson Road extension. We feel that our parcels should remain medium-density along with the Woodbury and Friendship Station. This would keep with the current feel in the immediate surrounding area, and we feel any reduction in density would not be equitable nor justified. In addition, about the reference parcel, there was, parcel was provided by Jeff Roach, PE of Peak Engineering Design. The 2030 land use map designates the property as medium-density. The 2045 map designates the property as low-density. In talking...
I'm going to pause you here.
Okay.
And I appreciate that. We do have a hard copy and it will be into the record, so...
Thank you.
And I think you got to the key statement, which was their request was to maintain the medium-density zoning.
Correct.
So, we've got that. I underlined it. Thank you, Mr. Balkum, for coming out today.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you.
Always good to see someone who has an old Apex heritage. You may be familiar with Balkum Elementary. Mr. A.V. Balkum was your, is it great uncle?
My grandfather's brother.
Grandfather's brother, great uncle, yeah. Very nice to have you here, sir. Andrew George.
Hey, I'm Andrew George. I'm resident of Walden Creek Neighborhood. There is a few people, if y'all can stand up, if you're here from the Walden Creek Neighborhood. So, I'm speaking on behalf of our neighbors.
All right, very good.
Thank you, guys.
Before you go, and we haven't started the clock yet.
Okay.
Before you go, thank you all for standing and identifying that Mr. George is representing you tonight. Before we get started, I will say this, just on the off-chance that you might want to cheer, we do deaf sign language cheering here, so we can continue talking while you cheer. All right? So, if you feel like you'd like to do that, please feel free. Mr. George, you have the floor, and Town Clerk, we're going to give him nine minutes there.
We're discussing this property here, next, adjacent to the Walden Creek, just west of it. So, chief concerns are traffic, not allowing for proper buffers from a medium-density to high-density, there's not much there to divide there. Compromising the small-town feel that Apex has strived to maintain, water runoff issues between multiple properties along that line that are existing and will be worsened, and then visual obstructions from a citizen's backyard. So, I've been a resident of Walden Creek for four years now. I've lived in Wake County all my life, grew up down the street from West Moyer, so, but we're just concerned that the new designation from the 2030 plan has it mapped as medium-density, and this is going to medium-high to high-density. We understand that lands can be developed. There's not going to be cows grazing there forever. So, we understand that. So, we want this growth to be responsible, though, and to have the proper infrastructure in place. It sounds like you guys have spent many hours putting together this plan, town staff. We appreciate all the time and energy that's been put into this, Shannon and your team. But we want to make sure that it's responsible growth. To be honest, myself and close to 100 different people that I've talked to, citizens of Apex, have never heard of this plan before. I know you guys have spent many hours trying to make sure that, and you listed many different ways that you've tried to communicate this with people, but many people have not heard about this plan until four weeks ago, when we received a letter from Jason Barron. So, one other thing we'd like to consider is just delaying this plan. The town of Cary gave citizens six months after publishing a draft like this to get input and try to figure out. So, I know there's been a lot of time put into up to this point when the draft was published, 55 days ago, but let's allow a little bit more time here. Many of the citizens I've spoke to, you know, there's over 70 neighbors at the town meeting, or the neighborhood meeting that Jason had, and you guys see how many people are here tonight. There's already concerns with areas around the Apex Friendship High School, Olive Chapel Road, the Wimberly Road Park, transportation, the possible legal issues y'all talked about briefly, the bus stops. There's other comments that aren't finalized, so I'd ask that we postpone this for another 30 days to get a little bit more feedback and make sure that this is the right plan moving forward. So, concerns, traffic concerns. Morris Acres wasn't designed to be a high-traffic road. It was a country road, cut in half by 540, and now it curves around, and it's got a lot of awkward, unsafe turns from Jenks onto Morris Acres. There's already been multiple accidents. Y'all know about the school bus that was overturned at Roberts Road, or not overturned, but had the accident on Robertson Jenks. There's been many accidents there. 64 backs up, it does have access to 64 West, there's no on-ramp, we've already talked about that. 64 East is worse. How do you get 64 to 64 East from this parcel of land? You cut through the Home Depot parking lot. That's already happening. You add in 300 apartments plus whatever additional density. This is a 40-acre, that whole plot of land is 42 acres. The current rezoning application is in for 17 of those 42 acres with 300 apartments proposed on that. You add in the cars, and you do the math on the additional 42 acres that would be high-density. You get to about 750 units on 40 acres. That's over 1,200 cars that are going to be commuting through the Home Depot parking lot to go 64 East. You know, let's say that half of those commute to RTP, so they're going to hop on to 64 West, no problem. Getting home, they're not, they're going to have issues getting back home, because they can't do that. And then, the other half are going to commute to Raleigh or where else, and they're going to have to cut through the Home Depot parking lot. There's already preschool that's been approved on the corner of Vision Drive, which is right there at the top of the Home Depot Hill. So, we have additional traffic coming when that preschool comes in, and then you add in the 1,200 cars that are going to be commuting through Home Depot. If we kept it at medium-density, that would still allow for around 300 units, which would be a more manageable 450 cars, if you do one and a half cars per household. So, the appropriate buffers, we don't really have, there's a few trees there. You guys know when it's fall time, half the time of the year, there's no leaves on the trees, so there's not going to be an appropriate buffer, there's not enough land there. And there's also an elevation change. So, my neighbor, Ryan Simmons, his house, and then also another gentleman over there, their house is going to be backed up to a five-story apartment complex with no trees. You can't put enough Green Giants or Leland Sepress, whatever Sepress is, to get up to the 60-feet elevation. If you put them in the creek bed, they're going to have to be 100 feet tall to meet and create a visual barrier there. Let's see, the neighbors that Jason's referencing are the three or four neighbors out of 600 neighbors in our neighborhood that are happy about a potential piece of land that might be rezoned one day, but is currently in this plan of green space. So, there's three or four people that he's talked to that are excited about it. That's not representative of the neighborhood and the traffic concerns and other concerns. The small-town feel, it's all over Apex website. That's what most of you guys probably live here for, that's why I live here. We enjoy that small-town feel. More apartments, they bring short-term, people who aren't invested long-term in the community. I'm not sure as far as taxes, what that does or not, but we want to have longtime investment, invested citizens that are going to be here for not just a 12-month rent or 24 months while they're in transition, or whatever it may be. That's not our goal. There's an example of Roberts Crossing, there's a zoning development application, 2018 hyphen 14. So, they have 35 acres looking to redevelop, twice the size of this, and they're putting 167 townhomes. So, why can't we look at doing something like that? That's in a medium-density, that's an appropriate use for that, this portion of land here. That Roberts Crossing is right here, so, not too far away in the medium-density. Flooding concerns, my neighbor over here, as well as Ryan Simmons, their back of their property is in the 100-year floodplain. I would ask that we take a deeper look at that and see how that's affected. He has, a couple of times a year, three feet of standing water in his backyard. You can see the water stains on his fence that are three feet high from just existing water runoff issues. Add apartments, high-density, more impervious surface, you can't engineer away, but so many problems, especially with water. That's probably the one thing that mankind has not figured out. Look at the beach and all the issues we have with erosion and things like that. So, that's one thing, we can't just engineer away. Visually, I already talked about this a little bit, but imagine having a five-story, you have an overpass, you say it's 35 feet high in your backyard from the Peakway, that's got to be incredible. I'm sure you love seeing that every morning when you go out back and have your cup of coffee. Imagine a 60-foot-tall, five-story building, that the elevation change, the base of the building would actually be at the rooftop of this gentleman's house. So, then, you look out about 100 yards away, you have the bottom of a five-story building looking up. I don't think anybody wants that in their backyard. I don't think that's why this gentleman bought his house, or Ryan Simmons, or any of the other neighbors that are currently on the bordering property. So, I really appreciate you guys taking time to listen to me, trying to get everything in here, but once again, I was born in Wake County, I've been here my entire life, I don't intend on moving, but I want this to be a place where my children don't want to move either. I want this growth that we're, most of you guys were elected to have responsible growth. You'll serve on committees to try to seek that. So, let's make sure that we are growing responsibly with the proper infrastructure. You know, we can talk about different stoplights or things like that, but you could only, stoplight's not going to manage an extra 1,200 cars commuting on Jenks Road or Roberts Road and all those things. So, and Mayor Olive, three days ago, he put us online that we need to ride the brakes on residential growth. I agree with that statement. Let's stick to that. That's why I will respectfully ask that we table this plan for another 30 days. Let's get some more feedback, there's already multiple comments, and then let's revisit and make sure that we've got this massaged out and it's something we can stick to for the next 30 years.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Roach.
Mr. Roach waves his speaking rights today, all right. I apologize, that was actually not intentional. I will explain to you some other time. John Kozlowski, followed by Tim Brent.
Hi, I'm John Kozlowski. I live at Walden Creek as well. This is my first town council meeting, so I was a little unprepared, but Mr. George did an excellent job voicing my concerns, also about the same Morris Acres development, changing the rezoning on that. So, I echo the same thing. I don't want to take everybody's time, but I agree with everything that's been said. I just wanted to have a chance to make my voice heard, so I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kozlowski. Tim Brent, followed by Jim Mead.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim Brent, 2663 Brighton Bluff Drive in Apex, and I am speaking on behalf of the Carol B. Healan Trust and their property in the western part of the 2045 Apex land use plan, future land use plan. I just want to point out a couple of things, and Mr. Balkum had mentioned the Woodbury subdivision. I would like to note that on the map, it is actually already west of the Healan land. So, as we talk about going rural, as we move west, there is already a medium-density subdivision to the west of the Healan land. On top of that, Ms. Cox mentioned that the future land use plan and the future transportation plan should be cohesive, and I completely agree with that. So, given the fact that what could be a future major connector, which would be Horton Ridge Road, comes through, off of New Hill Holloman, through the Woodbury subdivision, through the Healan parcels, and into Friendship Station, only affecting those other two medium-density projects, it would be my recommendation that we keep the Healan parcels medium-density as it again relates to both those two projects. And to me, it almost seems natural to have New Hill Holloman be that transition. Like I said, the Woodbury subdivision is already bordering New Hill Holloman, so I just wanted to point that out.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brent. Jim Mead, followed by Sarah Merz.
Jim Mead, 203 Thorn Hollow Drive, Apex, that's in the Castlewood subdivision. I'll be very brief. I was pleasantly surprised and thankful that the steering committee listened to the comments that were expressed by the Castlewood residents to change the current land use map from medium-density to rural residential. It does reflect the fact that that is an existing subdivision that is pretty much built out. We have children who grew up in it, moving back into houses when they become available. We have two families new with young children who are second-generation residents. It's a neighborhood that's going to be there for the long term, and this map, as it was altered from the initial proposal, does reflect that, that we are there for the long term. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. And Sarah Merz.
Hi there, Sarah Merz with Advocates for Health and Action, or AHA for short, and some of you are familiar with AHA. Our mission is to improve health in Wake County through policy and systems and environmental change, and so, the work you're doing with your comprehensive plan... plans, your transportation plans, the land use, that all advances health by supporting more walking and biking and people being able to do more active lifestyles. So I just wanna thank you for the plan. You just rolled out for your work on this, doing some high-density regardless of exactly how you do it, right? Of course, you want it to fit locally, but doing some high-density and really paying attention to some of the complete streets principles like you're doing is exactly what's gonna support health for residents so that they can safely move around. So just wanted to say thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Mers. All right, that concludes our public hearing for this item. So at this time, I'll refer the matter back to council for discussion leading to a possible motion. I know there were a lot of items that were brought up, so I guess we might wanna go through a couple of these items, but I'd like to try to not abandon one item before we come to at least some kind of general resolution. Otherwise, we'll popcorn around for an hour. But if anybody would like to pick out a particular comment or thought tonight to try to drive us towards a common goal on that, then at some point, we might be able to put together a resolution, or a motion.
So, thank you, Mayor. So I'm willing to start, and I'll try to make a statement.
Okay.
I would try. So, and picking up some of the key points that was mentioned in the presentation that we heard about, this is the third phase of outreach to get more public and written comment, so people had ability to do that this evening. For me, I would not like to make a decision this evening because I would want to provide to the folks who just recently gave public comment the same respect and time that folks who were able to do so at the other phases got. So I feel as though it would be important for us to let what we've heard tonight sink in. And then what I would like to do, if folks here agree, is to then send it back to staff and see if, you know, we can do this well but timely, and maybe see if there is an alternative like other folks got as well through the other phases to look at this one node. So that's my long statement.
Okay, all right. So I'll, I'll couch this. The conversation is now on. Do we want to send this to staff to review some of the items that came up tonight? And if the general consensus is yes, then we can discuss which items.
Thank you.
So if that's all right. So I'd rather not to get into the specific items yet, but how do others feel about asking staff to take a look at some of the comments and thoughts that were heard tonight, and then we can bring that back in a timely fashion? And we also need to follow, if we do that, we need to follow a process that leads to closure and doesn't prolong potentially inevitably. So with that said, I'll open it up to other council members if there's comment.
I just wanna make a general comment to staff and to the public in that, you know, this is a big plan, and there were quite a few changes to the plan. And seeing that there were only, you know, a few areas that were of concern, that's a pretty big compliment to staff that most of it, we've done pretty well and we've done right. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the process that, that has been gone through here. Saying that, I also agree with Councilman, Councilwoman Dozier that we need to step back, take a look at some of these areas a little bit more closely, and see what really fits here, and address some of the concerns that have come up tonight.
Okay. Any other thoughts on this item, letting staff take a look?
I would echo that.
Okay.
I'd like to see a list of the changes or discussion that we had tonight.
All right.
I tried to jot it down, but I can't even read my own writing.
Is there any, let me, let me, hang on one second. Is there any opposition, any born opposed?
I'm actually opposed to that because I don't want these to turn into yeses. And longer wait, we're gonna start running into projects that are existing that we're gonna have the same issue with interaction with old plan versus new plan. And so
Okay.
There's been 18 months. I'm ready to, I'm ready to vote.
I would just offer that staff already has a recommendation, if you all would like to hear it.
I would, actually, if you, on, on...
There were two areas that there were several comments.
Okay.
One is the Healan property. We'd recommend that it just stay at the 2030 designation. And the other is the property, the Morris Acres property next to Walden Creek. We'd suggest at this time that it just stay at the 2030 designation.
All right. So with that said, then let me make sure I can repeat this back for council. So, and, and Diane, I'm gonna repeat what you said, but I want you to check me, okay? So, and for the council's benefit, on the items of the Healan property, keep it as, what, when you say keep it as, is meaning...
It's medium-density currently on the 2030 land use plan.
Keep it as the 2030 land use plan designates, right?
Well, it'll be in part of the 2045 plan.
Right, 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 right.
We won't, we wouldn't recommend changing it at this time. And if the applicant, if the landowner wants to request a land use amendment in the future, they could do that, but I just recommend it stay the same.
All right.
Just to declare, can I ask a question?
Okay, no, just hang on. I'm sorry, that sounded rude. Please wait, if you could, 'cause I'm still on this one. I wanna, I wanna make sure I restate it again. So staff's recommendation on this one is to keep the Healan property that is currently designated, as it is designated in the 2030 plan, keep it that way in the 2045 plan.
Yes, that's correct.
No change between the two. Okay, did you have a clarification beyond that?
Would that, would that, because are we changing the medium-density max? So it wouldn't make it from a low to medium-ish to medium to low to medium-ish that they described?
It, it would meet the new designation, which goes from a maximum of six to a maximum of seven. But again, they have to rezon, and you all will hear that. And if you think that three units per acre, which is the bottom threshold, is better, you all can still do that.
Okay.
It just gives more flexibility when the rezoning comes in.
Okay.
Okay. And the second item was the, the property that has been referred to as Morris Acres. That general area, also keep as designated in the 2030 plan and carry that forward with no change into the 2045 plan, with the understanding that there can be a request by property owner under the 2045 land use map to request a rezoning, at which time, there will be a public hearing for that rezoning.
Yes, and if the reason, if they wanted the rezoning to be a different density, they can request as all other rezonings, a land use map amendment at the same time as part of the rezoning.
Okay. Part of the reason I wanted to vet that out from staff is because, for me, that changes the calculus. Because I was, I was actually thinking, yeah, it makes sense to see if staff can take a look at a couple of things, but with staff already prepared to answer those, and I agree, Councilman Gant, there, there has been, there is, there's been many opportunities, and I understand not everybody pays attention to what happens in government. And it's actually rare in Apex for a project to take 20 months in the making when it's not building a bridge or something along those lines. But to see, I think, to see staff already ready with a recommendation, I agree that there is, I don't wanna keep this window open too much longer. And because of the number of public hearings and public inputs and things, I also want to add the proviso that if staff in the process tomorrow are filing it, working through it, and they find something they perceive to be a mistake, and I'll, I'll use that term loosely, not implying that we make mistakes, but things happen, right? When you, you know, if you were to do anything 1,000 times, you're rarely gonna make a perfect record. And as you alluded to, Councilwoman Killingsworth, there are a lot of things that had to be covered here, and to see very few things, that's a testimony to dedication. So with that in mind, let me re-ask, and I'll start with Councilwoman Dozier.
Can I also ask a question? Because I think staff, I need an answer from staff on something.
On, on something we just talked about?
On minimum density requirements, which was another concern brought up.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, let me, if you don't mind, hang on to that, and I'll come, put the pin in that, and I'll come back to it. I wanna see, since Councilwoman Dozier brought this up about waiting, I wanted to get her feel on how that impacts her thoughts.
Sure, just change. I just wanted to see the reaction from people, and see if they to support that, and I...
Do you support that? Okay, seems like they do.
So thank you, Mayor. I just wanted, so the, my, my point about the outreach three is just because we allowed public comment tonight, and it's kinda hard to react to something tonight, but staff was able to do that. That, that was sort of my connection to it. Everyone else got some time, and that's it.
Yeah, all right.
So thank you, thank you, staff.
Sure, all right. So with that said, thank you very much for clarifying that. So, Councilwoman, you, you wanted to talk about the minimum, so you had the floor.
Yes. Was there a, is there a specific reason for minimums to be put in the density requirements? What is the reasoning behind that?
They're to be supportive of transit. That's the reason why we had them. But because it is a plan and not law, it's not in the UDO, it is a preference. It's not a requirement. And we don't mind if the word preference is added to that section, that it's a preference. Because in reality, you all will be considering rezonings, and it will be, you know, based on the recommendations of the plan, but it's, it's generally consistent with, you can approve it. You don't have to, it's not, it's not law.
Okay.
It's guidance. And then, I'm sorry, I did miss the Jinks and Wimberly request from Taylor Morrison. Again, like the other two, we would recommend that it just stay the same as 2030. They asked for a change. I think they should apply for that change as the property owners, rather than do it as part of this process, to be consistent with the three that had concerns, that we just leave them at 2030 and let the individual properties go through the rezoning process with a proposed land use map amendment if necessary.
Okay, great. I think that's fantastic, and I think you got what you were looking for. And I like that answer, actually. The map is a preference, and the UDO is the, the regulation. And since the UDO doesn't require a minimum, then the map is indeed a suggestion or reference. And whatever the density is at the proposal is what's being proposed. So I think that's...
Hold on, UDO, we're changing the UDO for that, right?
Not tonight, we aren't.
Oh.
That would have to come later, and I don't believe it was going to be our recommendation to put minimums in the UDO.
Okay, okay. I thought, I know the use was not gonna be the UDO.
All right. So tonight is the transportation plan and the land use plan map.
Okay, okay.
So just, my preference would be that we have that, that wording in there, preference for whatever minimum density, and that, that's my personal preference with that.
All right. And I made a note, so I think hopefully we'll coalesce on that.
That'll come up later.
Are there, are there other items? We've got the four now. So the Healan, the Morris, the Jinks-Wimberly, and the minimums, and using the term preference. Are there, is there another item?
Mr. Moyer, you had a concern, but I can't recall now if it was covered under what we're talking about.
It was covered, yeah.
I think it may have been the Healan property.
It was, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's one office designation striped to office slash medium-density.
Along Old US-1?
Old US-1.
And that was a change. Was there a concern about it? Did you have a concern?
That's a requested change. We had it as office, and it's requested change to...
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
Oh, I see, from, from a feedback earlier.
Office slash medium-density. And everything I've seen, when that happens, chances are really good it's gonna go to medium-density.
And what's your thought?
Yeah, what do you want to do?
I'd rather keep it there.
Keep it as office and...
I think, yeah, I think Councilman Moyer was involved with that also.
Seems to make sense the way it's kinda pigeon'd in between the railroad tracks, and we all hear a lot of stuff about the train, and I think it'd be wise not to put more housing, make a suggestion for more housing right against the railroad tracks.
I agree.
But that wasn't a focus area, that she said there was general consensus, right? For that office thing.
Doesn't matter, though?
Well, you will look at that. I mean, that was something they looked at.
Right, but they, but if, but they might not be thinking about, like you was talking about with the train.
So to be clear, it was office before, and it got striped to include medium-density residential as an, as an alternate use?
So the, excuse me, the 2030 map shows it as medium-density. We're talking about this, this area right here.
Yep.
The draft recommendations show that as office only, and we received a public comment requesting it to go back to medium-density, and staff are recommending the stripe.
Okay. So, did everybody catch that? So to be clear, 2030 was medium-density residential. And so during the 2045 drafting, we made, we collectively, Allison did, if we didn't like it, Allison did it, right. Sorry, Allison. You get paid the big bucks for this, made the recommendation to change it to office, or O-N-I. And there was a request to put medium-density back, so the staff responded by striping. So the question, I guess, for council is, and, and I'll start with those who were involved, do you feel strongly about sticking with O-N-I for the, as, as the change or leaving the striping?
I would go with the O-N-I, quite frankly. It's, because I know darn well that it's extremely likely that it's going to go medium-density.
If you stripe it in there?
I would stripe it. I mean, it's...
Any other thoughts?
I would agree with that.
They can come back after, with like, with the...
So, so that's a good point. If somebody wants to rezon it, they could ask.
For a land use change plan. We can look at it more detailed at that time.
Is there an objection to changing that to solid O-N-I? In other words, back to what we had drafted before? No, no objection?
No.
Okay. So, you got that, Shannon?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. So that gives me five items that I think we've covered, and I'm making a list. So is there any more, anything on the shopping list?
In the language, in the, for the current projects, right?
Oh, oh, right, right, right. So, right, so this will be the icing, the cherry on top.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. And I, I think that's fine the way it is. I don't, I don't see any reason to do that, change that. All right. So with all that said, I think I'm gonna call for a motion, and I'll try to position it so that it make it easy on the people.
Can we do two separate motions? This one first, and then...
This one first? Would you like to do this one first?
Sure.
Okay. Hmm, let me think about that for a second. I think, I don't know how to detach them.
Plan, right?
I don't think I can detach them.
I think logically, I think you can do this in second.
Okay.
I think logically, you need to approve the payment plan first.
Sure.
All right. So let's, and thank you very much for the guidance. What I, what I'll do then, at the advice of the town attorney who keeps us out of trouble, is to, is to ask for the approval of the plan with the changes that I'll read in a minute, and then, and then afterwards, ask that we amend that with the language for the grandfathering. And is, and if everybody's okay with that as the approach, that's where we're gonna go. Okay? All right.
I'll make a motion to approve with the changes.
All right. So let me enumerate the changes, make sure everybody's clear. So the changes are, keep the Healan property, and, and staff, you can fill in the blanks if I get the naming kinda not exactly right. Keep it the way it is in the 2030 plan, and just copy that over to the 2045 plan. For the one we referred to as Morris Acres, keep it as it is from the 2030 to the 2045. For the Jinks and Wimberly, same thing, whatever it is in the 2030, carry that over to the 2045. For the minimums in the, in the land use map and transportation plan, as appropriate, but not in the UDO, we'll use the word preference for those minimums.
Would that be all of the classes? Are we doing preference? Is it appropriate to do it for all the classes?
Yes.
Okay, all the uses, okay.
That's four. And the fifth one is for the piece of property that we've referred to, which I don't have a name for, but on Old US-1 near the railroad tracks, that we go, mark that as O-N-I, no striping for residential of any kind. And if the property owner at some point in the future really wishes to make it residential, they certainly can ask for a modification in the future. Those are the five items, and I assume that was what you intended in your motion?
Yes.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. So we've got a second. Is there a comment from staff?
I just, I just need a clarification.
Okay.
Just so you know, is 2008 Old US-1.
2008 Old US-1. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
And it was shown on the original draft with office employment at the front in the area that's shown in hatch on this map that's up right now. So when you're talking about it all being office employment, are we just talking about the striped area?
Whatever was in the draft before the comments.
Okay, thank you.
Is that clear? Because I think that's what we talked about and negotiated for. All right. So I've got the motion and seconds, and...
At that point, or discussion next?
Yes, discussion. Yes, discussion.
Okay. I really like the, the recreational use, that's, I think that's brilliant, by the way. Along, the whole thing is brilliant, but that one in particular is a, is a nice one, so I'm excited about that, that zoning.
Very good. All right. Any other discussions? All right. All in favor of the motion to approve the transportation plan, the land use map with these amendments that we've discussed? Not yet, this one, this addendum. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right. That passes unanimously. Now let's take up the notion of the addendum. So the addendum, there we go, you can do that, if you want to. Yeah. All right. Now's your chance. So now we'll take up the idea of the addendum. So the addendum, as a reminder, is, is a way to say, to development that's in progress or in flight, that now that this is passed, that you have to comply, that we, we've already done a survey of what's out there. There are 10 that are not likely to have an issue, there are two that may have an issue, they may not, but they may. So what, the recommendation from staff is that any application for development does, that does not have a site or subdivision plan approval, at the time of this adoption, which just happened, that the 2045 transportation plan must meet the requirements of the Apex, Advanced Apex 2045 Transportation Plan. Did I read that wrong?
No.
The 2045 transportation plan must meet the requirements of the Advanced Apex 2045 Transportation Plan, unless otherwise specified in approved zoning conditions. Just as a statement, I think this is good, and I think we can figure it out, whatever the, the minor issues are, but I'll leave it up to council for discussion or a possible motion on that.
So moved, I'm not sure. Let's do all of it again.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on adopting with this amendment, or addendum? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right. That passes unanimously as well. That concludes our public hearings tonight. If anybody wishes to leave, now's an okay time, and I will call for a five-minute recess. Thank you. We'll make it six. Indulge.